Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session, April 4th, 2022 of the Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have your public comment?
We do. Brian Lorge.
Mr. Lorge, if you don't mind stepping up your place, please, sir.
Good morning. My name is Brian Lorge. I'm a resident of Limestone County Commission, District One. I was quite dismayed last week when I saw the news that the Athens-Limestone Recycling Center would be closing. On January 3rd this year, Ms. Ruby McCartney made a presentation to this commission proposing a joint venture between Limestone County and the City of Athens for a joint recycling center. The proposal had two possible locations. Chairman Daley and Commissioner Black recognized the need for a bigger and better recycling program to meet the future needs of Limestone County. Ms. McCartney's biggest concern was the loss of the lease at the Lucas Ferry property and the total loss of recycling for the residents of Limestone County. That is what we are now facing. My wife and I took three giant trash bags filled with plastic to the recycling center last Wednesday morning, along with cardboard, glass, and paper. The plastic material we had accumulated from the time the center stopped taking plastics due to labor issues related to COVID. I wish you could have seen the line of at least ten cars waiting to drop off materials. Without the recycling center, our three bags and other materials would have ended up in a landfill with all the other material being dropped off. Recycling has many benefits, just to name a few. The creation of jobs, preservation of precious natural resources such as timber, water, and minerals, protecting the environment in several ways, including greatly reducing the amount of material sent to landfills. I understand the current center is operated by the Keep Athens-Limestone Beautiful Organization. However, I believe it is the county commission's responsibility to ensure that a recycling program that serves the residents of Limestone County is available. An independent contractor selected by the Limestone County Commission provides garbage collection in the unincorporated areas of Limestone County. It is my assumption that the cost of this program will increase if all the material currently handled by the recycling center is added to the garbage waste stream. This is an additional monetary cost in addition to the adverse environmental effects of no recycling program. I believe a successful recycling program is key to a vibrant and thriving community. As Limestone County continues to grow, in the future, the need for this vital resource will only increase. I encourage the county commission to establish a group to look into options to provide its citizens a recycling program. The options provided by Ms. McCartney may just be a starting point. We should look for short as well as long-term solutions to this issue. I'd be glad to support this effort in any way I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorge.
Thank you.
David Williams?
Mr. Williams, if you don't mind stepping up in the microphone, please, sir.
Mr. Lorge did a good job of covering most of what I had put together notes on. Couple other things, though, to consider. There are a number of commercial buildings available for sale or lease in the county, so there are places that would be, could be available. Another thing is, some of the local retailers have limited amounts of recycling. Publix has bins for a few types of materials. Lowe's will take plant containers for the garden center, as well as rechargeable batteries. There's probably something else that nobody's even imagined yet. And I checked this morning, and before the pandemic, they were processing up to 2,600 tons of material a year through the recycling center, just to put a quantity to how much material is being kept out of the landfill. The rest of what I had, I think Mr. Lorge already pretty well covered, so.
Thank you.
Charles Moore?
Mr. Moore. Chuck, Charles told me to flip. I always know Chuck.
How you doing today, Chuck?
All right. Well, I'd like to say first, I wish I'd have gone before them, because they're much more prepared than I am. I'm just gonna shoot from the cup. I've had a problem with animals from one of my neighbor's cows being out on my property, and I spoke with Mr. Barstool earlier today about it. When I say all the time, I'm gonna say 90% of the time. And it's not a lot of cows, six, seven, eight, something like that, but they have nothing to eat, so they're hungry, they're looking for something. And I've called him numerous times, texted him numerous times. Another neighbor has done so. Basically, everybody thinks I've got cows, and I don't. When they're out, they call me. And it's been ongoing for better than two years. Maybe longer, I don't know. But anyway, I've called Animal Control recently, and they said, you know, "We'll call them and talk to them. We can basically do the same thing you're doing." Well, that's to no avail. I mean, I've called him 20 times, texted him 20 times. Maybe not, I might be exaggerating a little bit, but not a lot. And I'm just looking for something, some type of recourse. I could tell Mr. Barstool I had a problem, or somebody in my neighborhood had a problem. I had a dog that they said was roaming, and they picked my dog up and carried it to the pound. I was in violation. That was the action they took. I was okay with that. But if Animal Control can pick up my dog who was bothering somebody in my neighborhood, why can they not do something about these cows? Why can't they pick them up? There needs to be something done. And like I said, it's not just me. I have numerous neighbors. I told Mr. Barstool the year before last, I had wheat on land around there, and they wintered, they grazed my wheat all winter. Had a pretty good-sized field, not that many head. I don't think they damaged my yield a whole lot. But, you know, at some point, I feel as though he has to do something with his cows. He either has to fix the fence. One neighbor offered this weekend to help him go all the way around his fence and fix it, and the neighbor helped him a little bit, fixed one spot, but he basically refused the help to help fix the entire fence. And I don't know if there's anything that the commission can do, but I am concerned. And like I told Mr. Barstool, I remedied the problem with my dog. I put in a $1,200 underground fence. And, you know, I want to be a good neighbor, but to have a good neighbor, you've got to be a good neighbor. And this guy's not being a good neighbor to me and a lot of my other neighbors. Just one other example, he has a donkey that was down the road in my cousin's pasture. And my cousin let him know, the donkey stayed there for a month. And the only reason he come to get it was because my cousin told him, "If you don't get it today, it's bothering a cow that's trying to calf. I'm gonna kill it." So he come and got it that day. And I don't think killing all this man's cows is a good recourse for me, but it's tempting. I'm not gonna do that. Let me go on the record and say, I'm not gonna kill all this man's cows. But I think something, somewhere in the county, there should be something that could be done to help me remedy this situation. I'll help him catch them and take them to the sale. But, and I told Mr. Barstool, I've retired from farming. I'm renting my land to other rowcroppers, and I know Colin knows a little bit about farming, and Darryl does it. Other gentleman, I don't know. But where there's a cow print this deep, and you plant, and a corn seed falls in that hole, that corn seed's gonna rot. Cotton seeds, same thing. And when they're out in that field every day, and we've had all this rain, can you imagine how many of those type situations there are gonna be? At my time?
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Chuck, I'll reach out to the sheriff and I'll get back with you after. Okay, and I'll find out what I can find out for you. Okay. Thank you, Chuck. We got any more?
No further comments.
Thank you, Ellen. All right. I will, I'll address some conversation with the recycling when it comes time for public comment. I'm sure y'all are gonna get comments, too. First thing on the agenda for today will be the minutes of the March 21st, 2022 meeting. Do we have any discussion with those minutes? All right, and the next thing on there will be to approve claims, the amount of $955,851.62. Anybody got any discussion with that? All righty, and then under resolutions and orders, we'll have a resolution here to approve a resolution for financing through Truist Financing Group for the lease purchase of 10 new 22-model Mack GR64F trucks, and then they'll have beds with them, and then we'll have one Mack 2022 P164T pull tractor truck. Any discussion with that? And I didn't hear what the rate was that come in.
I think it's .86.
Okay. I know it's awfully low. So anyways, any discussion with that?
How much increase do we have this year? Mark, do you know?
In the cost of the trucks?
In the cost of the trucks.
The cost, we didn't get any increase. We were able to place the order prior to the increase taking effect January 1st. So we didn't have an increase in cost this year. Now, there is that. We gotta take into account possibly for next year's trucks. So, and then I was gonna address giving you an update on the trucks, so when we get the engineer's report.
Okay.
And that's the reason we went back with Mack versus Kenworth, because we were already locked into that price, and with Kenworth, they wouldn't, they was gonna be so much more, because of quoting the new price.
Okay. Any more discussion with the dump truck deal? All right, on the contracts, agreements, and grants, we're having to approve a contract to audit federal awards with the Department of Examiners of Public Accounts for the period beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. And they do an audit every year, and this is just routinely, we approve this every year for them audit our records. Any discussion with that? All right, on the budget revisions, we have one budget revision for $47,500 for the sheriff's office. I think it's to purchase a new inmate van, I believe what it was for. I'm not sure. But any discussion with that? All right, we have no merch purchase. Under board appointments, we'll have to approve, to reappoint Claire Middleton to the top of Alabama Regional Housing Authority until April 13th, 2027. Anybody have any discussion with her? All righty, then, we have two award of beds. Will be printers of receipt books, with printers of stationery, and for $1,648, a book. And the other one will be printing for the revenue department with Devo Printing data, and it'd be your attachment there for all of the printing there. Does anybody have any discussion with the award? All right, on the personnel action, first one on here will be to approve, transfer Michael Bloodworth from a deputy to patrol sergeant effective April 4th, 2022. Any discussion with him? Second one on here will be to approve to promote Daylon Legg and Richard Clanton to patrol sergeant effective April 4th, 2022. Any discussion with that? Third on here will be to approve the amendment to Equipment Operator III job description, and that's just kind of following suit with Equipment Operator II, the amendment we made on it the other day. Anybody got any discussion with that? All righty. Fourth on here will be to approve to hire Jonas Waltrip as Equipment Operator II in District One pending a drug screening. And then five on here will be to approve to hire Tana Hensley as a corrections officer pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with any one of those? All right, we have no merit increases today. At this point, engineer, Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got a few subdivisions for your consideration today. We have Kennesaw Creek Subdivision, Phase Two. This is a major for final approval. Thirty-two lots in District Two. This is south side of Nick Davis Road, 1,900 feet west of Jones Road. Beulah Road Subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final with 15 lots in District One. North side of Fane Road and the west side of Beulah Road. Chapman Subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, two lots in District Three, approximately three-quarters of a mile west of Little Elk Road, north side of Snake Road. Limestone Ranches Subdivision, this is a replat of several lots, 126A, 127A, 139, and 140. This is a minor for preliminary and final affecting those four lots in District One. This is approximately a quarter mile east of East Limestone Road on the south side of Batrimville Road. Nick Davis Road Subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Three. This is approximately 300 feet west of Mooresville. Now, this would be...
District Two.
This should be in District Two. I apologize. That should be in District Two, approximately 300 feet west of Mooresville Road on the north side of Nick Davis Road. Woolley Subdivision, minor for preliminary and final, four lots in District Three, and it's at 29348 Hardeman Road in Madison. And then Tony Senior Subdivision, this is a replat of tract 1B and 2B. This is a minor for preliminary and final affecting those two lots in District Four at 17575 Tucker Lane. So that's all I have for your consideration today. Like I said, I was gonna give you some updates on our trucks. The Lowboy tractor should be back from the hydraulic shop this week, so it should be completed this week. And then, we have six trucks that are currently having the beds installed on them. The other remaining four trucks were delivered last week to the bed installer, so all 10 trucks have made it out of the Mack factory or at the bed installer. So we're probably four, six weeks out or so from being able to get all 10 of our dump trucks. So, and then I spoke with, I spoke with the auction company. He thinks that we didn't, he said, he thinks that we'll get a good price in the next sale. The Mack dealer also wants to make us a price to purchase our trucks for them to have his inventory for theirs, so we can kind of weigh those options when they come in. He said they haven't made, he hasn't made an offer yet, but I'm just throwing it out there for us to be able to weigh those options as they come in. Last, before I left for vacation, I sent y'all an email about milling machine that we tried out last week. I wasn't here to see it myself, but the crew did say that that trial went well. There was some feedback. If we, if we, it really would change the way we approach a lot of our paving projects. It would be one of those, it's really gonna be, it would really be beneficial in more of a mill and fill type project if we're patching and overlaying like we've been doing. It would be, it wouldn't be as beneficial. But a mill and fill, like what we wound up doing with Easter Ferry, they said, man, it would change everything. The, I went and ran some numbers this morning, kind of changing the mindset, chip seal and overlay, patch, chip seal and overlay to a mill and fill project increased the cost of our projects 10, 15%. But it would extend, the project would be able to be done faster, and it would be, it would extend our construction season instead of having to wait till these May 1 to October 1 to be able to do our chip seals. We'd be able to, at 40 degrees and rising, we'd be able to do the work. So just kind of throwing that out there. They did make us a good offer for trade-in on ours, which would leave approximately a $400,000 purchase price to be able to buy the bigger machine, so.
How much, how much life expectancy more would be the mill and fill road versus chip seal road? I know that, I mean, 10, 15% cost if you get another four, five years out of it, that's...
It's, well, what we would be able to do, mill and fill, we would take all the cracking out of the road. What we're trying to do with a chip seal is to limit the reflective cracking. There's still gonna be some reflective cracking, but like I said, so it might extend it a few years. It might be a wash. I don't, I don't want, it would just be a projection. And you could project, on average, a few years extra life. But, but every situation's gonna be a little different. The, in my opinion, the big gain is the speed at which you're able to do the work and being able to do it over a longer period of time, which will come in handy over the next four or five years with the, with the plan to spend the ARPA funds on roads that would really extend our paving season and really extend, really, and really be able to speed up the projects. But, but after that four, five-year period of time, unless the money keeps coming at that same pace, at that point, where it's overkill. So those are the kind of thoughts. Four or five years, it may be time we need to look at selling this machine and replacing it anyway with the amount of work we're doing. So, I mean, I just want to kind of throw, cover all the bases and give you guys something to think about. Because like I said, you'd be talking about another $400,000 purchase. We have a machine. It's getting some time on it. We were told when we bought the machine, you're gonna get your Max return on it at three to four years. We're at four years now. We've gotten much more out of it than I ever thought we would get out of it as far as back, the patching that we've been able to do and the increased quality of the work that we've been able to do. So, and like I said, conservatively, we could, we could do a project, we could probably do a project 25% faster with this bigger machine.
I know the Mooresville Road project we're gonna work on, man, it would make, we have 30-something days scheduled down there. If it could take 10 days off of that schedule, that could be, you know, really, really...
It takes 10 days off the schedule. Right now, we're looking at about $8,000 to $9,000 a day, equipment and, equipment and personnel.
But I mean, if you take 10 days off of that, you done took a good chunk of your money out of it.
You took $80,000, $90,000 off of it in one project.
Well, Terry Bobb said he thought it took three, two to three days off that project on Easter Ferry.
Well, you're getting to start a month early, too.
Well, we're getting to start. Normally, when you get 40 degrees and rising, we'd be able to really do major projects. We'd be, full year, I would say probably middle of December to middle of February, we would kind of be hit or miss, but other than that, we could do full projects instead of really kind of waiting until May 1 to get started on projects.
And quit on what?
October 1.
October 1.
Yeah. I don't know about y'all, gentlemen, but I'd be in favor of looking into seeing about it.
I already was.
No problem.
So, the big thing would be the funding on it. Do we want to do it locally? Do we want to try to do, go through ARPA funding? Do we want to do a loan on it? I mean...
ARPA funding, anything over $200,000...
We'd have to bid, so it would slow the process down.
Slow the process down.
If we have, if, I don't know, we have in public building or anything, I can talk with, I haven't been here to talk with Emily, so I'm throwing all this out there and have not talked to Emily.
We're gonna leave that up to you.
Let's preface that.
What about looking at like this? If we purchase this, is there, are there other companies that want to buy one after two years being used? Can we turn around and do the same thing we're doing with dump trucks?
I would have to, I would have to ask. I was told originally, we would get our Max after three to four. For the current one we have, we're at four now.
Yeah.
And it depreciated about 50%.
Okay.
So, so if we got a $600,000 machine with 50% depreciation, that may not be the best way to go about it.
Yeah.
But on another note, too, you gotta look at what it costs to rebuild it, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that thing, you know, after a period of years, you know, you know, if you...
You want to keep that machine in good shape.
A poor man can make it with good stuff, but a rich man can go broke with junk. I done farmed long enough to know that. I done been broke plenty of times with junk. If I'd had good equipment, I might have still been farming, but I have junk, so I went broke.
But anyway, like I said, I just want to throw it out there, but that's, that's kind of where we are as far as the funding goes. That would be the big question, and I have not been here, like I said, to even just approach that with our accountant, so.
Well, I speak for myself. I'm all in favor of you looking into it.
I am, too.
I think everybody here would be the same way.
No problem.
All right. Anything else?
That is all I have, but I wasn't here last week, so if y'all have anything. One thing, our signal that, out on 72, I know LaDon and Jason have both mentioned it to me this morning. We are trying to get the electrical contractor on site. It's a broken wire that goes to one of those signal heads, and it's causing the controller to throw everything off. So we have to, and that wire has broken bad enough now that it's really creating havoc. So, we have been trying to get somebody in. We did everything we could do. When it got to replacing wires, we have to have an electrical contractor come in. We've been trying to get an electrical contractor since before, I mean, for the last two and a half weeks at least, so. And really, before that, it's just, Jason actually put us on an electrical contractor that thought they could get in here faster. So, so we are, we're working with them now, and we're gonna stay on them because that's a priority, so.
Well, I'm up to about 15 or 20 phone calls a day about it, so, or texts or emails or something, so.
So, anyway, that is where we are on that, and I hate it as much as you guys do.
Well, we appreciate it. Anything else from Mark? You're awful quiet today.
Yeah.
All right. You almost had the Monday blues.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got one more thing on here, other business to approve, build another business to approve, the Limestone County Cyber Security Policy and the Adequate Use Information Technology Resource Policy. Fish, do you have anything on that?
Requirement by the state. All right. Anybody's got any discussion with it? We have no schedule of public hearing at this time. Report of officers, Commissioner Sammet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate gentlemen coming in with concern about the recycling, and I can assure you, there's not a commissioner up here that won't do whatever to try to keep it. It's a good thing. It keeps our landfills from filling up, and anything you can keep out of the landfill, the better off you are. Appreciate y'all coming out and addressing us. And Chuck, on the animal thing, I know what you, we've all been through it, I guarantee you, but it's not, I know it's aggravating for you, especially you with the crop and all. A person's liable for that animal, and that liability can run a lot deeper than what folks realize that have that animal a lot of times. I mean, not only is that aggravation and damage to you, but those animals get out on the road, and, I mean, it can be deadly. And that, a person that has them needs to take that into consideration. I mean, that's why I don't want the things at all anymore, because I couldn't keep them up. So, so, yeah, you've been there, but, but they are aggravating. I mean, it's something that you take on, you're liable for it, you're responsible for it, and you should take care of it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Commissioner Sammet. Commissioner Barstool?
I do. I don't know if I'm the only district that's having damage to roads by heavy trucks, but I've been kind of researching that issue. You know, I think we, as commissioners, we have a responsibility to protect county assets, which is what a road is, but we also have to weigh that against transportation needs for people, you know. The, I was, what's available to us, I've been kind of looking, in a 2004 Attorney General's opinion, I'd like to read to you. "The county commission, by appropriate resolution, may authorize size and weight restrictions upon vehicles utilizing roads and bridges within the jurisdiction of the commission. Consistent with its responsibility and authority to maintain a good system of public roads, the county commission may regulate road use by appropriate means, which may include the permitting of such use under certain circumstances and conditions. The commission may also impose a fee for issuance of their permit and impose a bond requirement. Likewise, consistent with its authority, the county commission may determine reasonable and appropriate limitations of use of county roads and bridges under certain circumstances and conditions. Appellate cohorts have consistently upheld the rights of the commission to protect county roads." And I've thought about how do we do that? And Alabama DOT has agreed to enforce, help us enforce any weight limits that we would put on roads. I talked to them. But I don't really want to get into that. I come up with a solution to require a bond requirement for developers and then let them determine if they want to tear the road up or not. I don't know if that's, that was a reasonable approach to me. Somebody's gonna pay for tearing the road up. Either the taxpayers of Limestone County or the person developing the road. Up until this point, the taxpayers footing that burden. So what do y'all think about a bond requirement?
I'm against it.
What are the pros and cons of a bond?
It's a tax. I'm against raising taxes.
I don't think it would go because of the way our roads are built. A lot of our roads are political roads. They were built for, they wouldn't be built for the heavy traffic, but the people that are running those roads can't help that, so we have to, and we've had contractors that have worked with us when they did tear the roads up, putting them back together, you know, and it's, it's just a matter of trying to get along with them, you know.
Well, I mean, you got, you're talking about, you know, I know you're talking about subdivisions, and this, that, knows what you're talking about.
Right.
Well, I mean, we got big trucks that also... Well, I mean, we got big trucks that also do local deliveries, you know, out in my side of the county. How are you gonna regulate that out there?
And, and the one or two trucks on the road, that probably not gonna-
So, we're gonna have somebody sitting there going, that's number three, we gotta start charging that guy a bond.
We can't pick and choose.
I mean, it's gonna be difficult to do. Now, we already got a severance tax coming out of both quarries that's supposed to go to that for us to use it. Uh, your district was able to use all of it for the next sev- six or seven years to pave the roads of Newby and that area through there, so we've got a severance tax coming from them. I don't know how we're gonna pick and choose. Is it gonna be concrete trucks? Is it gonna be, uh, uh, just, just gravel trucks? Is it gonna be people hauling dirt? Is it gonna be people pulling a, 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 a backhoe? I mean, uh, this is, this-
You don't-
I mean, this is more and more government, more and more regulations, more and more taxes, and I mean, it's more and more, 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 more. People are tired of more, and you're asking for more, 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 and it's from the same people that are already trying to make our communities and our state better, and we just, just, we just gonna go to them and go, hey, we don't want growth, hey, we don't want jobs, we don't want anything better, so we're gonna bond you and tax you to death so you don't wanna come here anymore. I just, I just think that, I just think that's crazy. I wish that, I wish there was some pot of gold sitting right over there and we could fix all the roads, but it won't be, and it's certainly not gonna fix all the roads. I mean, what's the bond gonna be? Is there some astronomical figure that the bond's gonna be? 'Cause it costs a hundred and forty thousand dollars to pave a, a mile, so each truck, we're gonna charge how much? I mean, you're the one that did the study, so what's your study? What is it? How much money is it gonna take to get all the roads in Limestone County fixed? 'Cause, I mean, we can just tax people to death. We buy a new car, we tax you ten thousand dollars so you can fix the roads. I mean, what are we gonna do?
I don't know. Are you through, and then I'll talk.
I'm asking questions. You asked us a question, I said, no, I'm against it, no, it raises taxes, so I'm asking you a question, can you answer it?
I can.
Well, good, knock it out.
It, the development will, will have a certain, like, Wells Road is tore up. It's a gravel road now.
I know, you've made that, you've made that point clear. Wells Road's the worst road in Limestone County.
Either the tax, taxpayers, so I guess your solution is let them tear up what they want to, and then the taxpayer come fix it. That's, that's where we're at. Uh, but if a development, he's only gonna use a certain amount of road, I would take a picture of that road, charge him a bond, and then let him decide how much of it he wants to tear up. If he wants to haul a half a load of dirt and keep the road the way it is, then he can do that. That transfers the cost of the repairing that road to the developer instead of the taxpayer. Uh, there's not, no reason you have to load a, a dump truck eighty thousand pounds if the road won't stand it.
Well, that, that would be, that would have to be a law that would be changed, because I think, do we have a regulation on any of the roads that we have that it could, can they haul two hundred thousand pounds on any road they want to? Tons? No, I mean- But the state does. I mean, that's why they using a gravel road in my district. The state has, the state has an overweight, but, which is by the state law.
Yeah.
Um, the state has an overweight permit that they can issue, and, um, we, if they're gonna haul on a local road, the state requires us to, to give approval for them to haul on that local road, but that's the only time we get involved in that. If they're only hauling on local roads within Limestone County, then we have nothing in place, and we have no weight restrictions or, or permitting regulation or anything in place for that. So, what roads would we do this on? Would this be all roads that are-
No, just the road that the development is on.
Like a subdivision development?
Exactly.
What about industry? What if, like, Mazda Toyota, let's say, they hauled in millions of truckloads of stuff to build Mazda Toyota? Do we charge those people too?
If they tear the road up?
Do you not have on a case-by-case basis restrictions on weight limits over bridges?
Well, those are, those are all set, those are studied by the DOT and set by the DOT.
Well, Bridge by my house recently has been, in the last twenty years, that weight limit was significantly increased.
Is this public comment now? I just, I just don't know if we're gonna follow rules and regulations. No, we, but, but, but bridges, we do have weight restrictions on bridges, those are all set by, um, the DOT.
Then you can do that to the road.
Yeah, I think what the difference is, is what our road, our, most of our roads compared to what Jason is talking about, those roads were probably modern roads that can withstand the weight. Most of our roads were made when there was, there was single axle dump trucks.
Or tractors.
Or tractors. There, there's no base to them, so the question is, do we wanna let them get tore up or not? I'm just looking for, and I'm open to suggestions, any way we can alleviate the problem. The bond, to me, it makes more sense because it gives the developer, uh-
But a bond is something, we give them their money back at the end of the-
If they don't tear it up, that's exactly right.
So, during the process of them hauling it back and forth to that area, you don't think that, you think it's gonna be obvious that if they do it for two weeks, that we're gonna be able to go out there and look at the roads in two weeks and say, they did it? Who's, who's gonna justify that?
I can, I can go out and look at Wells Road and tell you who did it. There's big old gravel spots in-
When you get into bonds like that, I, I, those are, you, you do open yourself up for that back and forth argument. I mean, I, you, you can fill us in on the legal side of it. I'm just-
I'm open, I'm open.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the practical side every time, because we have it currently allowed in our subdivision regulations. If work is not completed, then they can do a bond to get it, till they get it completed. I don't like it, I don't like issuing those, I don't like doing it because of that back and forth that it opens up. Um, we've had, we've had developers take advantage of it, and it's worked great. We've had other developers take advantage of it, and it's a constant struggle to get the work completed. So, um, so like I said, it's, it's one of those things that, that's been my limited experience with bonds, so you can probably fill us in on what the legal side of it.
I don't think any one of us can afford to spend a fourth of our budget to repair a road that we didn't plan on.
I, I can't, you're exactly a hundred percent correct, but I also can't sit out there and count trucks, and we don't have a waiting for, we can't even keep, Mr. Moore, we can't even keep six cows out of his yard. How in the world are we gonna enforce all of this on these roads? I mean-
I'm not going-
I mean, we, we're gonna be a little stretched out just getting his six cows back in the pit that's supposed to be here.
I'm not gonna force it, I'm gonna take a picture of the road before and a picture of it after, and then if, if the, uh, if the road's tore up, I'm gonna tap his bond.
Well, I, 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 I would like to think I had that authority, but I really don't think that we have that authority as county commissioners to enforce a bond.
Do we, do Mr. Bill?
Personally, or take pictures and do our own investigations. I, I didn't take that class.
You could definitely get back and forth issues of proof and, and, you know, to prove someone did, did something that, that, uh, would require you to tap the bond or allow you to tap.
So, we do have authority to do that?
Well, you, as the Attorney General's opinion suggests, there's a broad authority from, for the commission to, to act and to potentially do a bond or to do permitting. Uh, the backend question on that is, well, then how do you enforce it?
Correct.
And then, and then when do you have, when and how often do you have to go to court if you have people that, that suggest that you're, you know, improvidently enforcing the bond?
Right.
Or the road was already damaged before they ever put their first truck on it.
That would be an argument that, that they might make, or it was caused by weather or whatever other condition and-
Mr. Barstow, I, I understand. I wish we had money, and I wish we, I, I mean, I really wish upon a star, but to continue to put, you know, our home builders are citizens too.
Exactly.
The people that are building these subdivisions are not all from Toledo, Ohio. There are people that are doing business that are part of our local Home Builders Association in Limestone County that are working for a living, and we're going to, I mean, just, we can just pick those people out of the blue, I just don't, that, that's hard to do. I mean, if you have a, if you come up with a good plan, man, I'm gonna lead the, I'll jump on your back and ride it all the way to the, to the State House if you want to.
Well, I'm asking y'all to help me come up with one.
I can't come up with one in eight years. I just know we don't have it. I know that things have happened to give us more money, and when we get more money, we're already behind the eight ball because that money's spent. So, I don't know. I think it's a sixty-seven county question. I think you could probably talk to Sonny Brassfield and maybe come up with a solution, because we're not gonna do it, the four of us. I think we're all pretty smart, but I don't think we're gonna come up with a solution of solving, uh, infrastructure problems across the United States. I mean, I, I like to think I do a good job, but I don't think I can come up with that on my own, or us.
So, where we are is we just let them tear them up, and then we'll come along and try the best we can to fix them.
Well, it, it sounds asinine, but that's the way we've been doing it since the beginning, but that's, you know, that's, uh, that, that's what we're faced with until somebody else comes up with a better plan. The plan, the bonds, I, it, I don't know about these other two, but I'm against that. I'm against the, i- if you wanna do a permit for something, yeah, a permit, you can do something, 'cause a permit, we don't have to charge a fee, so when we start talking about putting in the tiles and all that, yeah, we can permit that, but if somebody's gonna build a house, and then we're gonna charge them a permit fee to put in the tile to get to their house that they're building that are citizens, I mean, we just keep going on and on and on, adding taxes. And that, that's what we gotta find out. Maybe we can find out a solution by, from somebody where we don't have to enforce anything, because we can't enforce half of the stuff that we're supposed to enforce.
Well-
That's, that's the headache, and I, I understand, you're, you're, you're just now getting involved in it. Gray Road, you know what Gray Road was, right there beside that rock quarry? It was a field road.
It was a field road.
It was just a field road, and they went in there, and Danny and, and Ned turned and went in and put all them rocks in, and, and Rogers Group helped, and that road is probably as good a built road as you got in your whole district right now. Them tru- uh, trucks been on it all the time, it's probably gonna tear it up, but you have no clue what it took. If we did to Wells Road what was done to Gray Road? That's three hundred thousand. Three hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, easily.
For Newby Road, for New, from, from the quarry, uh, Newby Road out to Mooresville was one mile, and we spent four hundred thousand dollars for one mile of road, uh, I guess to, to accommodate-
Turn lanes and everything.
To accommodate the Rogers Group's trucks.
Just for safety, it was a safety thing that we did for. The turn lanes and everything was, was, was added a hundred thousand, about a hundred thousand dollars, so just to keep a two-lane road, a two-lane road, it would be about a three, four thousand.
To accommodate a pri- a, a for-profit business.
Well, we didn't accommodate them for profit. I remember going out there with all my men. We did it because the road was narrow. We had triaxle trucks meeting school buses and individuals in their cars, and when they got there, that turning, when they got there to turn in, there was no way to avoid a, a, a possible collision, so that's where the turning lanes came in. I don't care if it was Rogers Group or if it was Food World. If it was causing a safety issue, that's what I was for.
Well, maybe I should just leave it gravel, and then when the developer starts wanting to sell those houses, he'll want it paved then.
Quite possibly. That might be, that might solve your, that might be the solution to your problem. Just don't do the job.
[laughing]
That's it, just, just lay back and say, I'm not gonna do my job I was elected to do. That would work.
I knew you and I could come up with something.
That's it.
Well, I know where we, we, we're, I blew a time here. I know we, we've worked this over here pretty good, um, um, you guys think of-
I'm, I'm through, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I got one more thing. Do you pre-worthy road? Uh, it's sinking, we're gonna investigate whether Huntsville had authority to, uh, put their sewer line down the middle of it. Uh, I think we probably need to inspect it from a safety standpoint, public safety standpoint. Uh, I'm through. I'll try, I'll try not to-
I think that happened before I was even, any of us around here.
But y'all don't remember when that was.
I went back, I went back and looked it up the last, when you brought it up, and-
Oh, well, when, do you know when it was done?
It was about two thousand and twelve. I went back and looked it up and pulled it up, and, uh, I, I don't know, I think, I think the two of tho- those two men right there can probably answer the question better than I can, but I think it was an agreement. I don't know about a full- Uh, that's why I wasn't able to find an agreement. Maybe I didn't go back far enough, but I wasn't able to find an agreement, and, 'cause I, I didn't have a timeframe. Richard Sanders is a good one to contact, and former Commissioner Steve Turner's another one good to contact. They can probably give you that.
Roll on, Commissioner Black.
You got it? We got sixteen minutes. You acting like we in a forest fire.
We, 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 we just want everybody else to have their opportunity.
I mean, you weren't here the last meeting, we went a minute over, so I mean, I'm just gonna bet you, you picked the best meeting to skip.
[laughing]
All right, on the, on the cows, I've, I've dealt with it too, Mr. Moore, and I can tell you this, that I've seen two court cases. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not giving you legal advice, but I've seen more than one person load them up and take them to sale, and I've sat in on a court case with a friend of mine that was in there who continuously told them that it need to be on there. You, uh, you cannot remove them from your property by force unless it, the force is a legal means of removing them. So, just, I'll talk to you about that later, but I wanted to do that, and I wanted to do that in public.
That's a very important legal means.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. And, uh, I also know this, that from having cows run over, that if it comes from the sale barn and it's released in there that day, this is not legal advice, this is just the way I briefly found it. If it gets run over and it's coming from the sale barn that day, for some reason, the farmer's not liable. If it's a pasture and it's documented, I, I got document, document, document here written down, and that cow's gotten out. State trooper's been called, Sheriff's Department's been called, and then the cow gets run over, they're liable for whatever that, that accident is at that point. That's from experience, not from legal standpoint, let me tell you that. So, you've got a really, really good concrete foundation to stand on. You can win this before they can even blink. So, I just, I'll, these people are, he can help you more, but I know the Sheriff's Department's able to, uh, Sheriff McLaughlin to be able to help you out a whole bunch. All right, the other thing that I've got here, uh, speak of the devil, and he walks in. Uh, six months ago, in October, we approved a budget. Our budget was approved for animal control and our veterinary services and stuff here in Limestone County. At that time, we had a massive discussion about, that's too much money, we need to pick another way to do this, we need to pick another way to do that. I, I didn't have a problem with the way it was, so I'm letting y'all know that we're six months out. I haven't heard any other suggestions, how we do our animal control, how we do our veterinary services, have we bought a building that I'm aware of, have we researched and done any more studies to find out that it's cheaper to do it like some other county or whatever does it, but I'm letting you know, uh, we fixing to be in budget here, it's just right around the corner, and, uh, if you don't have another option in place, and this person doesn't provide, that's out there right now, Robert Pittman doesn't decide to provide it, you fixing to have a whole lot more and six cows on your hands.
Right.
You fixing to have a bunch of cats, you fixing to have a bunch of dogs, so I'm just letting you know that maybe we need to do some, everybody needs to start doing some research and studying. I'm not, because if it ain't broke, I'm not for fixing it. So, it's working, we haven't had any issues, we don't have people coming here talking about dogs attacking children, we don't have issues of rabies in Limestone County, so what we've got is working. So, if any of you men want to have a different idea of how to do this, um, y'all better be doing it, because I'm not researching any further, and I'm not doing anything about the shelter, because if it ain't broke, I'm not gonna fix it, so, um, y'all just better get on it, that's all I can tell you, because days are getting short. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Black. Commissioner Townsend?
Wow, I hope I can follow you off. Be a little shorter and sweeter here. Uh, first of all, thank the ones that came in, talked about the recycling. We are definitely looking into that. I think Collins probably gonna talk a little more into that, I'm gonna let him do that. Uh, I'd like to thank Keep Athens Limestone Beautiful for the river cleanup they done this weekend. Uh, I think they had several volunteers show up. Um, I think they did a good job. I've got the numbers on that, I have, they took the trash, I'll get the numbers to y'all on how much they picked up, so, um, but, uh, Easter ferry, I believe, was completed. Uh, all relax lines, I think we're, we're gonna hold off on that, I think, I guess, until we get our truck.
We, we have paid for the truck.
Yes, okay. But, uh, they did a good job. The milling machine worked really well. Uh, I think it's, it's, I think it's worth definitely looking into for us, so, but other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. I need to do a little housekeeping first. I forgot this at the beginning of the meeting. Um, if you can't never get in for a public comment, there, there is a chance to where you can email one in or whatever, and each commissioner has got a copy of this email here from Mr. Ken Fox. Um, Ken Fox emailed us about the burying of animals, and I'm just gonna kinda, I'm not, I'm not gonna read it to you today. We've all got a copy of it, administrator has a copy, it'll be recorded in the meeting minutes, um, but it tells by the, you know, the Alabama law that within twenty-four hours a person, animal dies, has to be buried and all that, so. Thank Mr. Fox for that, and I apologize to him for that, and, um, next thing is, um, this is autism month, I have my autism tie on, um, our courthouse will be lit blue for this month for autism. Um, thank Mr. Todd Tumbler for the tie, he's done a whole lot for autism, and I will be trading ties next meeting to go to a different color here. For, um, this right here will be for childhood abuse, and we're doing pinwheels and doing a proclamation up on the courthouse square to eleven for it, 'cause this is also childhood abuse month, too, and I wanna thank the, you know, Child Advocacy Center for all they do, and that, they, we have a wonderful staff over there, and, um, they had a hundred and sixty-eight, um, cases last year, and they gonna put a hundred and sixty-eight pinwheels out here for that, for the childhood abuse. pinwheels out here for that, for the childhood abuse. And I've got my-
I didn't know what that was.
Well, my tie is for, we know, boys and girls, blue and pink. So, we're going both ways. We're supporting both, everybody there. And, um, so at eleven o'clock, we'll be up here doing that and, um, we'll give them a proclamation up there. And the courthouse will be lit blue because their color is blue too. This one have a blue shirt, blue tie. Blue everything today, so we're all blue today for both occasions. Um, and another thing is, um, the other day was Viet- Vietnam Veterans Day. Um, we made a proclamation here. Some of the Vietnam veterans was gonna come today. I haven't seen any of them yet. Okay, they're outside. We're gonna do it next meeting. But I just wanted to say that we did proclaim March twenty-ninth as Vietnam Veterans Day. Trying to speed up here because we've got but a few minutes. Um, recycling, I'll leave the rest of my time for recycling. We are working, I think all four of these commissioners are committed to some form of recycling. Um, the gray recycling in Limestone County is structured. We gave an appropriation to the Athens Recycling Center, which is equal to, equivalent of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We pay two employees and plus furnish some vehicles and some gas and maintenance on the vehicles. For the recycling center, which was operated and ran by the KALB, and I want to thank that board and that staff for their many years of service out there. Um, I know we've looked back and forth at facilities, this, that and the other. I think recycling will look some, it'll be some form of recycling in Limestone County in the future. I don't know how to work. I don't know how to look. But the, what happens to happen here is, is KALB has, is dissolving the recycling board as it sits today. So, what they will do is, when they dissolve, a lot of that equipment and those vehicles and all will be property of the county commission. And we have to go through the process of letting them, because they got some stuff that belongs to ADM. They got some stuff that belongs to them. And that, they have to disband everything they have to, then a lot of the equipment will belong to the county. And then we will know more. We're, we're in meeting with them every day. We've had several meetings with the board and they've met with us and met with Ms. Ruby several times. Um, the lease on the building, we can't, you know, that was gone away. And the deal with the building was, is figure out a way to, had funded, had paid for that building. You know, nobody, we never come up with a concrete plan. We looked at purchasing a piece of property. Then we also looked at building a new facility on that piece of property purchased or buying the existing property. The problem with it was, is KALB is a nonprofit organization and they could not borrow money to buy this facility. And we was all back and forth to who was gonna purchase this, that and the other. So, for the future of it is, I think that there will be some form of recycling in Limestone County. And a lot of times, it may come back better. I know that it's been a great program. And the, the interesting thing to me was, is how this all started. Um, um, Lee researched it in, in night, I forgot exactly what year, but a, a teacher at Athens High School started-
It was in nineteen seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. It started this program and they, then the city kind of moved into it and took it over and moved over to the city building. Then the board, they developed a board and bought and leased this piece of property out here from SpinCo. So, it was kind of a unique thing how it all started. Um, as far as county government, we are committed to recycling. We've been, like I said, we've been giving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. We've been paying two employees out there and plus been furnishing vehicles and materi- you know, maintenance on those vehicles. We're committed to that amount of money. And I mean, not saying we're not committed to more or, I mean, we just gotta figure out, we gotta figure out where we're going in the future. So, I know recycling was shut down ten months through the pandemic roughly. So, I mean, you know, their lease is up. They've gotta get everything out of that building. So, when we get everything inventoried and get all that, I'm sure there'll be some kind of plan. I don't know what it'll look like. Don't know who will operate it, but somewhere along the way, if somebody, whatever, the county commission is committed to that much money, I think all of us are in the same boat, because recycling is a good thing. And not only just for the, I mean, you know, it's really good, it's good to teach your children because it's amazing, you know, like Earth Days and things like that, to watch the children, you know. And we're, I mean, as like us, we're at the commission office, there's ninety percent of our employees bring their stuff and put it in the back docks in those bins out back, because they come out, pick up the cardboard and all that. And I know during the pandemic, I heard people that would call me and say, hey, they had, you know, ten vehicle, or ten, they couldn't park a vehicle outside because they couldn't get in the garage because the plastic gets ate. So, we are committed and we are looking into it. And I think all the, I, I can't speak for all of them, but I think all of them are committed to some form of recycling. So, and with all that said, I know that's been a lot, but, um, thank everybody for attending. In about five minutes, we will start back over right here with a recess until ten AM right here. Thank y'all.